We are going to take up item 6.6. Consideration of Presentation from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, providing an overview of Clear Lake Hitch Summit Meeting. Explanation of the Relative Population Estimate and related hitch topics. And today from Water Resources, we have Jordan Beaton. And please introduce the item and your guest.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Jordan Beaton, Water Resources Program Coordinator. Today, we have Felipe Laluz from CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, for a presentation for you on Clear Lake Hitch.
Welcome, Mr. Laluz.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And I really appreciate the Board having me come back. It's my pleasure to be here. So as Jordan said, my name is Felipe Laluz. I'm a Senior Environmental Scientist with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I facilitate the Clear Lake Hitch Task Force. And in that role, I really serve in coordination and communications, both with the Department and with our partner agencies and other entities. Just to give you an overview, I'm going to talk about the task force and our role, as well as provide an update on our most recent summit. I'm going to talk about our draft population target and relative population index, which are described in the draft conservation strategy. And I'll explain why I keep using draft when we get to that topic. I'm also going to talk a little bit about hitch habitat and provide some information on how the public can stay informed and how the public can help. I also want to say that this is, you know, I had some questions. Some questions were fed to me, both from the Board through various channels. So I'm trying to encompass everything I've heard. Keep these questions coming. I'm happy to come back and provide more information. So the task force, as many of you know, originated from a government-to-government consultation between various sovereign tribal governments and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. That occurred in August of 2022. We have held two summits, one in 2022 and one in 2023. And we are planning a third for 2024. And the role of the task force is to coordinate projects, share data, and improve communication. I know scientists are notoriously bad communicators, so we're trying to work on that. And this has really been an excellent exercise for the state to really get out of our silos and come out into the county and get our boots on the ground and really have a face. These are just some of our collaborators. Of course, some of the tribal sovereign governments, as well as agencies from the federal, state, and local level. Just some of the projects that we are either starting or helping to facilitate. Of course, US Army Corps of Engineers with the Middle Creek Project. We are tracking that very closely. Some of you may have seen the California Conservation Corps out here clearing brush and doing some stream bed maintenance. Some research by USGS. I could fill the whole afternoon listing all the projects, but I'll try and keep it focused. So really, one of the big questions was what happened in the 2023 summit? It was an all-day meeting, followed by some site visits on the second day. The big commitments were staff funding, staff and funding. So part of that commitment is me. You all have me for another year at least. And again, I'm happy to come out for these meetings. And as well as providing some funding, the Department has committed $2 million in barrier removal funds, as well as to match our prior funding to support tribal science. We talked a lot about co-management during that summit, and not only in keeping all the agencies and the tribal governments involved in decision-making, but also upholding our duties within our own jurisdiction, so enforcement, research, and that sort of thing. We've talked about the need for restoration a lot and identified some projects that are ongoing. I know the county just received funding from the Wildlife Conservation Board for a big project. And we're looking forward to working with them, with you all, on getting that going forward. And we also talked a lot about the conservation strategy. And this draft conservation strategy has been in the works for, I believe, over six years now. And we do want to, are making a big push to get it over the finish line, get it signed and implemented. Some aspects of it have already been implemented in the research that we're doing. But we really want to put a pin in it, get it done, and use it as a guiding document moving forward. Of course, there are areas to improve. Data being a big one. And many of you are all aware of the State Water Resources Control Board Information Order and Emergency Regulation to look into the surface groundwater interaction. You know, hitch need water, fish need water. And so we're looking at how these resource management affects their biology and their habitat. We also discussed the need for more biological data. I know in 2023, it was a big surprise to a lot of us, a big relief, that we saw a big increase in the number of hitch observed. And we identified some gaps in our monitoring that may help us better understand how the hitch behave and inform conservation actions. We can also improve on enforcing existing regulations. The Department of Fish and Wildlife has committed increased warden activity in the area. And we are also working on bringing some other projects into compliance. You know, older projects that have been grandfathered in. We're working to ensure that they comply with existing regulations. And we also want to resolve some habitat and life cycle uncertainties that arose because of 2023. And of course, the big, one of the big barriers that we're working on is Kelsey Creek at Main Street Bridge. I stopped by there on my drive out here to see what it looks like under higher flow conditions. And this is one of the major barriers that we are working on removing. I'm going to shift gears now to the relative population estimate. This next slide is kind of scary, but I'll step you through it. And this breaks all of our best practices on slides, but I felt this was the best way to convey this information. So it's a lot of words and some math. So please understand the presentation will be available on the website. So please take a look at this slide for those of you that want to and dig into it deeper. But the relative population estimate is exactly that. It's an estimate. It's not an absolute abundance. It's not a measure that says this is exactly how many fish are in the lake. What its strength is, is we use consistent methods to measure them, and we could use that to observe trends over time. It uses a mark recapture method. So we collect a group of fish, mark them. In this case, we punch a hole in their fin. So it'll heal by next year, but that mark will stay during the survey. We release those fish and then recapture them. And then based on the ratio of marked fish in the recapture, we can estimate how many people, how many fish are in the population. We use two methods, the Schnabel Method and the Schumacher-Eshmeyer Method. I put the equations here. You can recreate this if you go through and take, say, a jar of marbles, 100 marbles, grab a handful, mark them, release them back into the jar and shake it, and repeat that. And you could plug those numbers into this equation and get an idea of how these different methods behave. They have their strengths and weaknesses. I haven't modeled this. We can do this in a computer and model it. But it would be a good student project, actually, to compare these two methods. And we calculate it two different ways because of, we want multiple methods to support. You know, we can't rely on a single one and one point in time. If we use multiple methods comparing them all, it adds strength to our decision-making. Just so, if you look at the little underscores, so it'll be t equals 1, t equals 2. Those are the sampling events. In 2020, when the survey first started, it was based on four sampling events. And that was due to COVID. Our district biologists ideally would be able to complete 10 sampling events. But between 2021 and 2023, the estimates calculated were based on between 8 and 10 sampling events. Again, with four in 2020 due to COVID restrictions. And these are results. So as you can see by that graph in the middle, 2023, we did see a large increase in fish catch. An important thing to note here, one important caveat, you know, of course, the devil is in the details, is these are adult and juvenile fish. So these are not larvae that were born in 2023 because of the good conditions. So it wasn't a population response to wet conditions. It was a population response to habitat connectivity. So these fish were somewhere on the landscape and were able to enter the areas that we sample. So Holiday Harbor, Kadokta Casino Harbor, Clear Lake State Park, and Sota Bay. Those are the four areas that we sample to build this estimate. And so there are several hypotheses, but I'll get into a little bit. But I wanted to talk about the numbers. When this report was put out, people latched on to the 1.3 million. And that was the highest number in the report. And people were latching on to it and saying like, well, there's 1.3 million fish. The population's not in any trouble. So that was based on the SEM, the Schumacher, yeah, sorry. So that was based on one of the methods. One thing to note is these have very large confidence intervals or error bars. So we're fairly confident that it's within this range. Most likely, it is close to that number. But the confidence interval for the SM ranged from 73, about 74,000, to about 7.7 million. That's a pretty wide range. So that's one of the weaknesses in that, is that if we don't get a lot of fish captured, we have these large error bars. For the SEM, the upper bound was incalculable. We were not able to calculate it because only one fish was recaptured. And the math to calculate that relies on more than one recapture. So we marked 1,000 fish, one was recaptured, and we got these numbers. And it's not to say that these aren't informative, but picking one point is not informative. You know, focusing on that 1.3 million is not going to tell us anything. It's all relative. And so over years, as we collect more data, calculate this repeatedly, we'll get an idea of the trends in the population and how they respond to conditions. So that, to kind of bolster the weakness in that and shore it up, we've developed a draft population target. This is described in the draft conservation strategy. And it's based on three CDFW surveys. So the visual survey, which our district biologist actually goes up to various stream crossings and counts the fish. The relative population estimate, which I just discussed. And the general fish survey, in which he goes around the lake and electrofishes and assesses all fish that are collected. For the draft population target to be met, these three criteria have to be met for six consecutive years. I have to note that this does not trigger anything. This does not trigger delisting or anything like that. This is just the initial goal that we're setting that we want to work towards. And we call it a draft population target because there's no consensus yet. We're still working on building scientific consensus to support it. So some of the criticisms we've heard is that it's a limited area. It only focuses in the upper arm. There's some concern that it does not allow for cultural take. So we are going to be working with the tribal governments and with the other research entities to refine this over the next five years and keep it incorporated, as it is right now, in the draft conservation strategy, with the acknowledgement that it needs to be improved and reassessed. And that's how science works. You know, we continually test. But as we can see here, the relative population estimate and general fish survey check the box. So the Clear Lake Hitch was the second-most abundant fish in the general fish survey. Both of the population estimates were greater than the 75,000 fish estimate. And the visual survey did not check the box. So 2023, we did see more fish. We did collect more fish. But this would not have counted as one of the six years in the population target. And just in short, to say that one year doesn't fix the emergency. You know, we are still concerned about the fish's persistence. And so that's really what I want to drive home here, is that 2023, while we did observe more fish, it does not get us out of the woods. It really will take six consecutive years of good, you know, of good population growth. Changing gears again, I'm switching to habitat. So this is to address some questions I had about why the information order relating to groundwater is important. And the answer is simply hitch use the entire watershed. So this is a figure from Matthew Young at the USGS. He published this paper in 2021 and basically looked at what food the fish were eating and showed that young juvenile fish are nearshore. Adult fish are out in the middle of the lake. And that we all know that hitch spawn in the tributaries. This is that, that life history that we're more familiar with. So the information order is to look at the tributary specifically. So there are still other aspects of hitch biology that we are trying to address. 2023 taught us that they likely occupy isolated bodies of water. Our district biologist did detect some juvenile Clear Lake Hitch up in Tulley Lake. And the hypothesis proposed by Fred Fire of the USGS is that this big population boom, apparent population boom that we saw in 2023 is the result of fish from outside of the lake, entering the lake from small bodies of water. And so we have some tools that we're going to use to test this, both in collaboration with the tribes. USGS has an old lift study. We'll look at the chemistry of fish bones to try and determine where these fish are coming from. And we're also going to increase monitoring in Tulley Lake to really see how much that can contribute to the population. The whole story is, it's likely that they are in small, isolated bodies of water. And it's likely that our imperfect sampling method missed some within the lake also. Because keep in mind, we only sampled those four areas within the lake. And that's why we add the other two methods to our population target. And we're going to align USGS's sampling and the tribal sampling to really get a robust measure of how the population's doing. So it's many bits of information feeding into the question. And so how does water use affect hitch habitat? This figure on the far right is from Winter et al. And the title pretty much says it all. This is a USGS publication, that groundwater and surface water are a single resource. And I put the link there. It's a pretty hefty document, I'm not going to lie. But the introduction and kind of fundamental points of it describe how the water table affects streams. And so here we see the top portion of that figure on the right. This is a gaining stream where the water table can contribute water to the streams. The middle slide is a losing stream where the water table is still connected, but is drawing water out of the stream. And at the very bottom, a disconnected stream. And this is the question that the information order is asking, is how does groundwater, you know, this plot is really simple. This figure is really simple. Geology is a lot more complex than this. So the information order is really to get the information we need to determine how water use is affecting water in the streams. And we have many tributaries throughout that feed into the lake. Likely, they're all unique in their own way. So we really need more data to inform this decision. In addition to that, CDFW is conducting an in-stream flow study. This is the complement, the study the Big Valley EPA conducted. They released a two-dimensional hydrodynamic model that uses us, you know, uses computer simulations to identify areas where flow would become an issue for hitch passage and rearing. So it'll identify areas where, say, gravel bars exist or other barriers that we can either target for restoration or identify target flow that we need, certain flow requirements that we need to allow them to pass. There's plenty of more information on the website. And just the draft study plan for the CDFW in-stream flow study is online. And the public comment, the public input period for that actually ends on the 7th. And I'll have the website at the end of this presentation. And so just continuing on with that, the timing in which the streams dry leads to direct mortality in the form of stranding, this picture. Many of you have seen before. This is Adobe Creek in March of 2014, a drought year. About a week before this picture, the flows were too high in the stream for our biologist to enter safely and sample fish. He used to use FIC nets. The flow was too high for him to safely deploy them. He came back a week later to find this. And you see, these are, these are fresh fish. And you could see the ground is still somewhat wet. So this is the result of a rapid decrease in flow in the streams. And we need better data to determine what really causes this. In addition to desiccation of adults, juveniles, and eggs, and larvae, it is also a passage issue. So fish can move up. You know, they'll dry up and they'll become stranded in isolated pools. And that requires the fish rescues that the Department conducts and some of the tribal EPAs conduct. Like I said earlier, there are many other habitat considerations, both within the lake and within the tributaries. Tulley, willows, and other native plant restorations are important and are going to be a big part of our conservation strategy. This picture on the left is the Big Valley shoreline where they are conducting native tulley restoration, planting native tulleys. And you have to stake down the tulley so they don't float away before they get established. Robinson Rancheria is also conducting willow restoration. Willow's being important to maintain bank stability. So that not only helps prevent erosion and sediment, but prevents, provides habitat for fish as they, while they are in the streams. And then non-native species. So the most visual of our surveys is the carp management program. Carp not only prey on, they consume, sorry, I'll go back. So carp not only consume eggs, they directly prey on the eggs, but they also root in the sediment and stir up nutrients, which can lead to water quality issues. And they're a notorious invasive species throughout the country. And then, of course, barriers in fish passage. So in our 2014 status review, we estimated that 92% of spawning habitat is blocked by barriers. This is a barrier on Manning Creek. It doesn't look like much. It's a small road, you know, maybe two feet. It was a barrier. We installed this kind of dinky fish ladder, and it works. We've gotten reports of hitch actually successfully using this ladder and passing this barrier. We built this. This was at no cost to the landowner. We just needed permission to be there. And the information that that barrier was there, because of course, it's on private land. We can't just go and do whatever we want. So the property owner reached out to us. We were able to work with them and our shop, our habitat conservation shop, and create this fish ladder. And we actually are currently working on one, have one in the plans for Seagull Creek to address another culvert that's a minor barrier, but still a barrier nonetheless. So how can the public help? Data. I've mentioned data many times. So we encourage you to share your data, either participating in the State Water Resources Controlled Monitoring Program. So folks have received that information order. Just please respond and work with them. The Big Valley EPA also has a well monitoring program where it's not monitoring water use, but they can install a sensor to monitor the height of the water level within your well at 15-minute increments. So if you're in the Big Valley watershed and are interested in helping and have a well near a stream, we can put you in touch with them. We also need to hear reports of where hitch are stranded. So this can be either reported to CDFW, and I'll have some contact information at the end, or to a tribal EPA. Robinson Rancheria has a memorandum of understanding with us where they can actually do the rescues without us coming out. And it really makes for a more efficient process. Barriers, of course, report barriers to us, both, you know, unknown. It seems that every time we go out to a private property, somebody points out either an abandoned mill or an old pump or something, a new barrier that we're not aware of. So we really want the public to be our eyes and report these barriers, both soft barriers, like debris piles, and more permanent barriers, such as old roads or infrastructure. And even just problem areas, areas that you think, that you see, like, well, there's frequent flooding, like the stream always spills over here. Let us know, and we can investigate it. Report pollution, both locally and to the Cal EPA. So we get reports of cars, automobiles. There was, last year, there was a truck full of fertilizer that went off the road near the lake. So those sort of pollution events, please let us know. And then, most importantly, do not disturb the hitch in the streams. Even if they are stranded, report that to us. They are a threatened species, so we can't, the citizens can't go and take them and move them themselves. But we request that you report those strandings to us and observe them, appreciate them, but please do not disturb them. To stay informed, I put three webpages up here. The State Water Resources Control Board has a dedicated Clear Lake Hitch webpage and email list. They have a lot of information about the information order there. The Fishing Game Commission has an email list where you'll get notifications. You'll get everything. So it'll be a lot of stuff that's not relevant to Lake County. But we do occasionally send out hitch information through there. And just a reminder, their meetings are hybrid. So you can watch their meetings online, submit public comment online. And the Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation for Clear Lake also has an email list, and they do have public meetings. I participate in the Technical Subcommittee, which has a public component. And so I encourage you all, for those who are interested and have the bandwidth, to start attending these meetings, providing comment. We want information. And this is just a bunch of contact information. So for permitting questions, State Water Resources Control Board has their Clear Lake Hitch specific email address. Our in-stream flow study has a specific email address. Our cannabis program has a specific email address. I included our district biologist up here. He might be upset with me for that. But if you do see stranded fish or major issues, please contact him or me. We have a general fish questions email address. So I'm with the native fishes group. You could email us about random fish questions. We'll come out and talk to classes. We love to hear from the public. And if you're unsure, contact me. You can reach out to me directly. My email's right there. I have a stack of business cards for people in the audience who want to get in touch with me. Basically, my role is to put people in contact with the right people and kind of herd the cats. And this is my last slide. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. And thank you for making yourself so accessible to all of us so that we can email you your questions and learn more as we continue down this path. Want to make sure and check in with my colleagues if there are any questions or comments. Supervisor Green.
Thank you for the presentation, especially summing up the summit stuff, because not everyone gets to go to those. And I'm just going to throw out some questions. I'm not expecting immediate answers. I may circle back with you after this. But I appreciate what the water boards have done and all that. CDFW doesn't currently have a dedicated webpage or a place where they host all their assets regarding Clear Lake Hitch?
No, we do not.
Okay, suggestion. To the extent people are going to be going out and witnessing these fish and actually hoping to do some level of community science or citizen science, the very nice math figures you had all had to do with population surveys in lake using your very rigorous scientific methods. So my question is, how do we get people invested in the idea that they can contribute through community science, not just letting you know when there are strandings, but is there much value in tributary observations of fish in the population modeling that you guys are doing? Because if there's a platform that we need to mature and make available to our community, if only to do environmental education, that's one thing. But if one of the data gaps is we're not even able to capture all the fishies that we see splashing up in the tribes, what's the use of that data? And what available data platform are you using currently to take advantage of community science?
Yeah, so we currently don't utilize a lot of community science. We do have the CHI Council's reports. For community science, the best, what we would be able to best use it for is for distribution. So especially for identifying places where hitch kind of congregate, because that usually means that there's a barrier. So if you're seeing big congregations of hitch, you know, next to a ditch or somewhere, that means that something's causing them to be there instead of spreading out throughout all the spawning habitat. Community science definitely has its strengths. One of the big drawbacks is standardization. So if we're just getting reports, you know, we can only use it for presence. We can't use it for absence, because nobody's looking. So that's one of the drawbacks of community science. And it's really difficult to successfully make a robust community science program. And we'd have to train, you know, a big cohort of people, have them using standardized methods, ensure that they can identify the fish properly. Because, you know, they look very similar to blackfish and to the layperson can look very similar to suckers or other fish in the streams, or roach. So community science would best be used for presence observations. To incorporate it into a big population model would require a lot of training and a lot of dedicated volunteers. I'm not saying it's not doable, but it would be a pretty big lift if there is a group that wants to undertake that. Reach out to me, like, I'm happy to work with you. We could develop a study plan. I know UC Davis does have a community science center. We can engage them and see if we- we could develop something, but it would take a lot of planning and some very dedicated volunteers.
It's good to know that, because as happy as I was to go around last spring chasing fish around and counting them, it doesn't sound like that's useful too much for the population modeling. Last question, you mentioned take, so as it stands right now, what's the take on Clear Lake Hitch? None is allowed, cultural take is allowed, but non-cultural take is allowed, or do you know the current state of the take regulation as applies to Clear Lake Hitch?
So as a state listed species, they're threatened, you would need a scientific collecting permit or a memorandum of understanding with the department?
All right. And last question, I promise, you're really focused on the tributaries, population modeling, all those good stuff that you're talking about in the draft strategy. If there's one thing that's maybe hasn't gotten a lot of attention or is de-emphasized so far, in my opinion, is non-native fish and how they might impact in-lake populations. And the only reason I'm asking that is, in our lake, our regulations are different than other lakes, as far as when there are game fishing contests. In our lake, they go to congregated weigh-in stations, and other lakes like Barriessa, they may do the capture of the weight and the length of the fish in the boat, and then release it right there. And the most common weigh-in point is on the upper lake, which is also where our Clear Lake Hitch are most prominent. So is CDFW examining the impact of non-native fish or the potential impact of game fishing regulations at all?
So there is a regulation specific to Clear Lake that requires a release of bass for these bass tournaments. I forget the actual distance, but it does require them to be released away from the weigh-in site. I'd have to follow up and get you the exact regulation, but it is available online. As far as the impact of non-native species, Robinson Rancheria, of course, is heading up their carp management, carp and goldfish management program. Our district biologist has done some stomach analysis, looking at largemouth bass. It's really, we don't have enough data to make any solid conclusions, and that is something that does need to be looked at. Predation, not only by largemouth bass, but also catfish are pretty voracious predators, inland surfersides are notorious egg predators in the delta, and then a lot of the sunfish, green sunfish and bluegill tend to be egg predators also. In order to do an egg predation study, would require testing for hitch DNA in their stomach contents. That's something that I don't think has been proposed yet, but is something that we can look into. We chose to focus on tributaries because the data that was coming into us was suggesting that there was a pinch point around the early life stages, so between egg and transition to juvenile, and that tributaries being critical for that life stage is really where we started It's a yes-and question, yes, tributaries are important, yes, non-native species have an impact. We haven't looked at mercury yet, or other, you know, contaminants, so we haven't gotten to it yet. But this sort of feedback is good, and I do hear the predation question quite a bit, and it's something that we'll have to continue looking at.
And then, last question, absolutely for sure, the inflow, in-stream flow models that you're hoping to create using the water board's data, what's the length of that process? I appreciate that you want to put a pin in the draft Clear Lake Hitch strategy sooner than later, but it sounds like the data collection that you're going to be partnering with the water board's on is going to take some time. So do you have a realistic estimate how long it's going to take to come up with a in-stream flow model, and it's going to be tributary by tributary?
So it is going to be tributary by tributary. Big Valley Rancheria already has their model out, it's on their website, so they have a 2D hydrodynamic report, specific to the Big Valley watershed. And so our, the CDFW study is going to complement that, not only looking at their water, at Adobe Creek in Kelsey, but also looking at other watersheds, at other tributaries throughout the watershed. So it's just building on their study, but the model exists. There's also the California Environmental Flows Framework, which is another sort of desktop analysis that we're going to use to complement our boots-on-the-ground study. So this will be three layers of information that'll help us identify restoration sites and problem areas. Sorry, I didn't, as far as the timeline for the State Water Resources Control Board, from what I understand, of course, I'm not with the water board, they, their information order is for a year, their emergency regulation is for one year. So that's the kind of window we have to collect data.
I'll add, I'll add the caveat that in the conversation with the state water board that they have stated there's the ability to expand that year. So at this moment, it's an unknown, but currently it's set at one year. Supervisor Pisces?
Yeah, I have a question about the draft conservation plan, is that public?
So there is a version on the county's website. There are a few aspects that we are at a revisiting, so it's still in review. We're, I mean, somewhat optimistically trying to get it done by the summer and plan to do some public outreach. It's not public yet, but we do want to get public input once we get the scientists all in as agreement, as close to agreement as we can. So we understand that it's been a six-year process, it's been a long process. When we do have it ready to roll out for the public, we're coming back here to talk about it, and we'll use whatever venues we can to get it in front of the public, to explain it, to answer questions, and to solicit feedback.
So the one that's on the website currently is the old one, and not the one that's, not the current draft that's being worked on? And so you think later this summer or next fall, or?
That's what we're targeting, we're targeting this summer, for a public rollout and then to ask for signatures. So it's, I mean, to work with one state agency is enough of a headache, to get all the state agencies and the federal government on board with a document is somewhat challenging. Basically, what we're trying to do is identify objectives, tasks, it's going to be very similar to what's, we're working on what's online. So that, we're taking that draft that's on the website, on the county's website, and just kind of essentially nitpicking it, saying like, you know, well, this doesn't go far enough, or this goes too far, we should also look at this, you know. For example, the population target has been kind of the focal point lately, we're really drilling in and trying to get it either to a point where everybody's happy with, which frankly isn't going to happen, but get it to a point where people are happy that it's on the road to being adequate.
Any further questions or comments? I have a couple of questions, appreciate the, I forget the title of it, but the population estimates and what we're looking for, completely understand that you want those consecutive years, because one piece of data point does not provide an answer if something has been solved, or if it's a one-year blip. But I do want to ask a couple of questions. One is temperature. I know that, I'm coming from a point of ignorance over here, I have certain knowledge, but not enough knowledge when it comes to the hitch, but I know in our conversations we're having about salmon, especially salmonids, temperature very much matters to their life existence and their ability to go downstream all the way down to the ocean. What is the sensitivity to temperatures when it comes to a very shallow lake that can easily go up and down depending on how the climate is interacting with the water?
That is an excellent question, and we don't have, it's called critical thermal maximum and minimum, and there are very specific physiological studies that we can conduct. We don't have that information for Clear Lake Hitch, we have it for blackfish, and blackfish are pretty tough and closely related to hitch. You know, we have this hypothesis that thule lakes can serve as somewhat of a nursery, and for those of you who have been up there in the summertime know that it can get very warm, oxygen levels can get very low, can be, you know, algal blooms. We're fairly confident the hitch are pretty tough, I mean, they're, most native minnows are, which is what allowed them to not go extinct so far, but we don't have the exact critical thermal maximum, and that also varies with the temperature that they experience. So if you keep a fish at a warm temperature, their critical thermal maximum will actually be higher. So it gives them a little bit of wiggle room, to an extent. We do look at temperature a lot, mostly on timing, migration timing, which, you know, 10 degrees C is when we tend to see them move up into the tributaries, when the tributary temperatures reach that temperature, but we haven't looked at the upper bounds.
And so one of the reasons I bring that up is, and you mentioned it, that you're limited to those four sites at this moment in time from getting that, those data points, and I know that you're looking at the shallower portion of the lake, which potentially could get warmer, and while maybe they're not sensitive to the point of die-off or impact specifically to their physical being, but if I can find shade and get out of the sun, I'm not dying from the sun, but I prefer the shade, is it possible they're moving down to their lower arms where there's deeper waters, where they can find cooler water, where it's more comfortable? And one of the reasons I say that is, are you planning to have some data sets from the lower arms to be able to kind of see the difference? Because, again, where'd all these fish come from when you had such a minimal amount? And I'll get to some questions about thule lake, but I'm just kind of curious if you're aiming to go to lower arm, just because it has that, it's not extremely deep, and it's still interconnected with all of the waters of the lake, but could that be one of those scenarios where we're seeing a movement of the population to deeper waters to get more comfortable with the temperatures?
Definitely, yeah, that's a great question, and it's called sort of microhabitat selection. Fred Fager's study, so the USGS study samples throughout the lake, and so they do, it's just a random stratified method, whereas our method is a fixed location. The benefit of having this random stratified method is you randomize the locations throughout the lake, including depth, so Fred samples at all depth, they drop their gillnet down in deep sections throughout the lake. He did some analysis, it hasn't been published yet, but he did show it, I believe, at the State Water Resources Control Board hearing, showing that 2023 was an average year water quality-wise, so as far as temperature and dissolved oxygen. So Fred's fairly confident that the signal that we're getting in the data, the increasing catch, is not an artifact of water quality, of water temperature. So, you know, this is a preliminary analysis, so of course, a big asterisk there, and, you know, I don't want to steal Fred's thunder when he's going to publish this, that's a whole nother presentation, but we're fairly confident that we have a good handle on the population trend, in that the observations made by the tribes line up well with our observations at the department and line up well with the USGS results. So this is, again, using multiple threads of evidence to support our decision-making.
Right. And just something of interest, just because I know that other fish are definitely being impacted by it, and just curious about that. So for thule lake, I'm completely ignorant to this, but what tributaries lead to thule lake and what tributaries are available during drought years that they, because I'm assuming, based on the numbers and the sizes that you found this year, with this theory that they may have been sheltered in thule lake or other smaller bodies of water, how were they spawning if they were not reaching or accessing tributaries, like we typically historically believed that's their spawning grounds? What were they using, was something available, or was it within the lake itself?
Right, and so I'm going to go all the way back to 1960, and there's an old report, it's by Kinsey et al., where he observed, he collected observations of spawning on the shore of the lake. And so Clear Lake Hitch can spawn within Clear Lake, but we believe that carp, and this is going back to that report from the 60s, that carp, so he observed spawning, you know, with, you know, light wind wave action, so you need some water movement, but immediately after the spawning took place, carp would come in and just vacuum up all the eggs. And so we don't want to write off Clear Lake in that, like, you know, well, they're not going to survive there, they can't spawn there, but we do want to focus on the tributaries because we believe that's where we can get more bang for our buck for restoration efforts. You know, we know that they can successfully spawn in the tributaries because we see it. As far as thule lake, it's Scott's Creek that feeds into thule lake, and there's some passage issues up there that I believe are going to be addressed by the Wildlife Conservation Board grant. And then minnows are just, they're kind of opportunistic, so they're going to take advantage of where they can, and we know this when we see flooding, they'll go wherever. If we left fields flooded, if fields were flooded constantly, they would be spawning there too. So they are somewhat generalists, in my view, well, there's some working on the conservation strategy that will argue with me on this, but I do believe that if they have a spawning habitat, they will spawn and will be successful, and we're looking for places where we can maximize that. But they likely do spawn in small ponds if conditions are right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Just one last thing, because you mentioned thule lake, and I'm thinking of, we do have barriers, including our reservoirs, so I'm so dumb, last year, man, I was like, ready, let's convert a bathtub, I was ready to freeze fish to save DNA. But is there a way to make use of these isolated water bodies to actually serve as mini fisheries in times of drought and what have you? Or can we, I'm going to use Highland Spree as an example, we don't have a fish ladder there, but either they're already running upstream of the dam, or if they're not, is there potential habitat up there that we should actually be considering the establishment of mini fisheries, not the expensive kind where we have to worry about genetic purity and stuff like that, but kind of natural mini fisheries to take advantage of habitat that may be blocked currently, and we don't have a mechanism, kind of the reverse of a fish rescue, or you would try to get them out down to the lake after they're stranded, but when they're spawning, can we rescue them into some prime habitat so we can create some populations that are geographically isolated, to the point that they could survive and maybe be good genetic stock after a time of extended drought? Or am I just back to the bathtub, am I just making it up as I go?
No, I mean, I think the, and this is just me personally, I think the solution is connectivity, is, you know, they will spawn if they can, and so by improving the connectivity, by allowing access to thule lakes and allowing fish to move between thule lakes, in and out, both directions, I think is really the solution. So really, we want to maintain not only genetic diversity, but diversity of habitat, so that means diversity of prey items, and I guess the common theme is, you know, a lot more is better. So if we have many tributaries that they can go into, or many little isolated ponds that they can utilize, and this life history diversity is really one of the strengths of many California native fish, so trout, steelhead and rainbow trout, or one of the ideas that come to mind is a trout can give birth to a steelhead, a steelhead can give birth to the trout, and so this allows the population to both persist in the ocean and in freshwater. And so that's what we're seeing with hitch, is that we need the lake to be sustainable, we need the lake to allow them to survive, and we need the tributaries to allow them to survive, so that if we have multiple bad years in the tributaries, the lake population can come and repopulate that.
I do have one last question. So you had that population estimate and the kind of strategic amount that we're looking for. The one that we did not check off for this past year was the visual. Can you explain how the visual works and how water quality impacts the visual number? And I know you said it was an average year for water quality, but just kind of curious how that functions in different years?
Yeah, so the, when I said it was an average year for water quality, that was within the lake. The visual survey is in the tributaries, it's limited to the Big Valley watershed. I believe there are 20 locations where our district biologist goes, and it's literally going to a bridge and looking and counting fish. So under high water, that could limit the ability, and also fish move, so the timing also affects it also, so you could, you know...
Stand still.
Right, you can't tell fish to stand still, and that's what, you know, that's why we need so many different methods to bolster our decision-making, because no one is perfect, each has their own limitations.
I bet that's a good use of potential AI to do the counting for you. If there's no further comments or questions?
Well, I have a question, comment, not related to this presentation, but when pulling this before and asking for a presentation, we, you know, wanted to understand from staff how, what were the different programs and projects that we had going in relation, that were tied to the emergency? And so I don't know if you, if staff is going to be speaking at... And so I don't know if you, if staff is going to be speaking at this time about that, because that was one of the questions I wanted to see. And I did speak with Scott, Director de Leon, yesterday about it.
Is he on to discuss? Director de Leon?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what was the question?
You can repeat that.
Just an update from the county's perspective on what we have been working on this last year, what grants or funding opportunities are out there, and projects going forward that are tied to our emergency.
Oh, boy, that's, it's a fairly lengthy list. I, I know the projects that I've been working on, there was a discussion about the Kelseyville, the Kelsey Creek Fish Ladder, and I've been assisting with that. And, you know, I don't know if Jordan or Angela might have a better answer for that. I know that there are several, several projects that are related to creek clearing, obstruction clearing. So I'm sorry, I don't have all the details there. You're catching me a little bit off guard, but perhaps Jordan or Angela might have a better answer.
Sure. Hi, this is Jordan Beaton. I can shed some light on that. Because of the local emergency declaration that the board declared, we have received more funding and have been able to prioritize more of our restoration projects. Middle Creek Project, Clover Creek Restoration. We're looking to do a sediment removal project in Coal Creek. We just received that WCB grant for $2.7 million for looking at Highland Dam feasibility study, Bell Hill culvert removal, and Thule Lake barrier removal, as well as outreach and education. We've also been able to fast-track two well installations for the purpose of water table monitoring in Adobe and Kelsey Creek. So those are just a few. We also received $500,000, no, yes, $500,000 of congressional funds for Adobe Dam feasibility, not Highland, and Kelsey Creek detention structure repairs and gauges. So that's, that's a few. We, I think we've got a couple more that I'm, I'm probably forgetting. Hopefully that answers your question.
I think that gives us a really good idea of what this has opened up for us in order to make attempts to have a solution. I'm going to open this up for
I just got one more. I just thought of it, thought of it earlier, but then I realized I shouldn't bring it up now. I remember in one of the presentations, they talked about how the, I'm going to call it Mud Lake, and people are going to get upset with me out of Blue Lakes, but Mud Lake was connected, and that might be a possible habitat. And are there any initiatives to look and see if that's possibly a place where some of the hitcher living during these timeframes?
Yeah, so our district biologist is going to be looking at Thule Lake closer. He did sample, I believe it was Lower Blue Lakes in 2021.
Lower Blue Lakes is what?
And didn't detect any. And I think it's been a while since he's been to Upper Blue Lakes. I know one of the fish rescues, I believe in 2021 or 2022, were released into Lower Blue Lakes, but we haven't detected any species, any hitch there as of yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just appreciate the work and the collaboration going on. Ultimately, Bruno, you're always bringing this up as the data, you know, as we're moving forward. And I appreciate those timelines and looking at setting those data counts as we move forward. You know, also, two key terms, barriers and the flows of the streams, I think are really important. Barriers being one of the biggest ones, and I know you put, you know, at least one project up there, but there's many other with vegetation abatement, gravel, other things like that. And we talked about some of those conversations too, because it's not only just for the fish habitat, but it's also for our communities around the lake and everything, making sure we have the proper flows, you know, as we're moving forward. So appreciate the information, appreciate you coming here and spending the time with us.
Thank you.
And I will add that some of these attempts to aid and assist the hitch to have spawning grounds and being able to go back to the lake, that also helps in flood control and other issues that we're dealing with that create other problems. And so there's, there's some solutions that have multiple reasons why we really should focus on those things, because it's not just one thing that it helps out with. There's, there's a whole lot more that we can gain from cleaning up our streams and making sure that they work appropriately. And I'm going to open it up for public comment. And please come on up to the microphone. We're going to start in the board chamber, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Pat Scully. Got a question for you or a comment on the visual surveys. I think this past year, CDFW's first hitch sightings that they showed on their surveys were like April 7th. If you looked on the, we talked about asking if there's other ways to report, the Clerk website, anyone can get on there and report. And they had observations of up to 1,000 hitch on March 15th. So three weeks before, and we were seeing them in Thompson Creek, we were seeing them in Dobie Creek well before. I talked to Ben about it, but if you're going to use that as one of the metrics in your, in your population targets, that gets really subjective if you're not up here looking. And that, we, we personally witnessed more than, what was it, 2,500 or 2,700? More than that in a single location on a single day in Adobe Creek. So I think as long as you're going to have that there, you got to figure out a way not to make it so subjective. So, and then I just had one comment, you showed the one picture of the creek crossing that you made the fish ladder on. And I actually had, I went out and took some videos of the fish going up, and it's still real difficult for the fish to go up there. And I'm just wondering why, and, and maybe you need a permit to do this. Can't you get a big dump truck full of gravel and put it on the downside of that? That, that barrier's been created over the last 50 years. You know, and it seems like there's pretty easy solutions to those, because that fish ladder is still very difficult for the fish to go up. So, anyway, just.
Yeah, thank you. And I appreciate you speaking to Ben and sharing the data with Ben. I do want to say that the importance in observations is standardization. So, so Ben goes and does a standard fixed observation. And so that kind of makes it, that actually makes it less subjective.
But if his timing's not right, like last year?
If we can't, if we can not have a conversation between the seats, if you want to get back up to the microphone, I don't want to stop you from speaking.
All right.
If his timing's off because of seasonal variations, and he kind of explained they do the same thing every year. Well, last year, we saw far and away more hitch than we've seen in a long time. But it didn't, I mean, he had, I guess it was better than it had been, but it, it didn't even closely reflect what was really happening.
Thank you. I appreciate the comment.
I have a question about that and what Pat said. Is there any way to bring like some video surveillance in or anything? So that if there's a change in weather conditions, we never really know when spring is coming here? And is, is that something that can be helpful? And I know Super or Chair Sabatier's made a joke about AI, but if there's a way to have just constant monitoring of the creeks during this time, then we would probably know how to time physical surveillance better.
Yeah, and we could design that study. I think the big barrier would potentially be vandalism if we put a bunch of expensive equipment out on, on the creek. But we do use, the department does use, they're called DITSON cameras, it's a type of sonar. And we use this around, you know, diversions in the delta and a few other waterways. There are, yes, the short answer is yes, there are other methods that we could use, and we can improve our methods, yes.
Next for public comment?
Brock Zoller from Kelseyville. Thank you very much for your presentation and thank everything supervisors do. I was only going to object really that you should pay a little more attention to the citizen science. There's been a lot of different groups that have measured the hitch population over the years in different ways, each one of them. But if you look at the trend line that describes, you know, how many of the year's efforts that they've been doing for each one of them, none of them really are suggesting that the hitch are going away. And you say that your point of the hitch bumping up greatly last year can't really be relied on, but, you know, they use the point where they weren't there the year before as one point, to rely on the fact that they are endangered. So obviously, that's not entirely true. It's just how you want to interpret the data. I say look at all the trend lines and put those all together, and that tells you that the hitch are not going away. They have their ups and downs for various reasons. One of them is drought. That's obvious if you look at the data that when there's a drought, why the hitch numbers that people see are not there. The other thing is, if you looked at Blue Lakes in relation to Clear Lake, this is about the size of Blue Lake compared to this room here, which is Clear Lake. So all, all of the fish that were in Clear Lake last year can't possibly have come out of Blue Lakes. So it's just a little bit hard to understand really how you can come to that as the most important thing. There, obviously, it seems to me spawning in the lake, and we're just not measuring the places. So I don't think they're going away. That's my only point.
Thank you. And I, I definitely can appreciate the, the wanting to share any and all information, but I also understand that science needs apples to apples to be able to truly get to final data and conclusions. But maybe there's a way to provide some training so that you can get citizen science in a way with maybe a greater margin of error, but at the same time, using the same methods to be able to provide numbers from those that are seeing things and experiencing things out there, just to see if that can help out with the greater understanding. But it does need to have very similar methods, or else it's going to be very difficult to be able to compare and contrast. Any other public comment on this item? Let's see what we have. We have a hand up in Zoom. And let's go ahead and open up for Michelle Scully.
Good afternoon, supervisors and Mr. LaLuce. I wanted to make two comments. My husband, Pat, spoke about the observations that we had as citizens in Adobe Creek. We live just down the way from Adobe Creek. And towards his point of when the observations first began, where boots on the ground can really help versus agencies that are here at intermittent dates. I just wanted to make the point that I completely understand what Chairman Sabatier said about citizen science and apples to apples. But just as perspective, my graduate degree is in biology with an emphasis in ecology. And I used to do surveys for Fish and Wildlife and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So I was trained in surveys, and I would second what he said about the number we saw in Adobe Creek being greater than the number reported out of all the tributaries for 2023. So that concerns me because in the draft population target, using Mr. Hewings' number of 2548, that number, we could say, was actually met in one, one tributary. And as, I'm not hearing any inclusion of our partners in the tribes. I'm on the board's Fish and Wildlife Advisory Committee, and we have regular reports from Big Valley and Robinson. And Big Valley alone reported over 29,000 rescues during the spawn. And I don't recall offhand what those cohorts were in terms of adults and juveniles. But that number alone seems to be ignored when we're kicking out this whole year of saying it doesn't meet the parameters for the draft population target. How does that work?
Yeah, appreciate your question. And again, it's, it's all about standardization. So we rely on Ben's visual survey because it's consistent. He's always out there at the same time, making the same observations. Fully acknowledging there are limitations, but the trends over time that Ben has observed are also reflected in the population estimate and in Fred Fager's data. So we could, I'm open to developing a citizen science program. It will take effort, it will take some staff time and providing that training, but part of the solution would be standardizing the observations that the tribes make and standardizing the observations that, that citizens make and comparing that to the established protocols. So the, the main thing is consistency, though, of always returning and looking for the same, you know, taking the measurement at the same place. If we take measurements at different places, then that other covariant of location also has some variability associated with it. And so Fred's survey comes from the opposite end where it's completely randomized. So he has no idea where he's going to sample until they actually do the planning. They run, you know, a computer program to randomly select the depth and the location. So that's completely randomized. So you either have to pick one or the other, either have a fixed location where you're making the observations and making consistent measurements, or completely randomized the study. So it's a steady design factor. I'm not opposed to incorporating citizen science. It just has to be done carefully, like all science.
So I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle, were you finished?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I understand, I mean, I've written a thesis myself, so I understand experimental design. But my question is, the, the tribes are out here on the ground all the time. And when you get a number reported, like over 29,000, I don't have my committee notes in front of me, it's pretty hard to look at that number and then look at the 2548 and say, oh, shoot, we failed for this year, when, I guess I'm, citizen science is an orange, but I would think that working with the tribes would be an apple.
Yeah, I appreciate that. The trends are reflected in the data. So if we look at previous years, the visual survey, the numbers were in the hundreds. And then this year, it was 2,000 and something. So we did see a, or at least an order of magnitude increase. And that's because we're consistently sampling, if that makes sense. So to incorporate the tribe's data, we'd have to have a standardized study design.
So I'm wondering, with the task force, is that a priority? To standardize with all of the different stakeholders that are interested in monitoring? And that has been one of the priorities that we've given to the Fish and Wildlife Committee that Michelle's on, is local data collection. And so I'm wondering if that can, if it's not a priority, can it be a priority so that we can expand?
Yes, that's definitely a priority, is to get all of our programs to work together in unison and, and talk to each other. We're also, so not only standardizing methods and data reporting, but also we, another big priority is to make a big data, I guess database is redundant, but a localized repository for all of the data, where everybody can access it and use it. And so I'm happy to, to work with the Fish and Wildlife Committee to create some standardized protocols, but it'll have to be done carefully. But yes, it is definitely something that we want to do, that to standardize all of our methods, not only for fish observations, but for water monitoring also.
And I would just add for, if we wanted to incorporate some video surveillance, there are several private property owners where vandalism wouldn't be an issue, that every year, they, they make their own observations and invite stakeholders out to do that monitoring.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. We have Sarah Ryan from Big Valley Band of Pomo.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sarah Ryan, the Environmental Director for the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. And I, you know, heard, heard our name a couple of times and just wanted to, to comment on that. And also a question for Felipe. First of all, thank you for that presentation. It was very interesting and some great questions and discussion. The number of fish that, or chay that Big Valley staff, with some assistance from Robinson and others, rescued this past summer and spring was over 26,000. It was about 26,500 hitch or chay. This did happen over a period of months and so, and in multiple locations. And they were mostly newly hatched. And those are numbers that aren't normally, you know, those are fish that are not normally caught by any other method that Felipe was discussing. So we did, you know, plenty of times along Adobe Creek, saw lots of little puddles where they were stranded, just as has been our concern over many years of why there needs to be enough flow for the full time of the, the chay, you know, making it back to the lake after they've been hatched. So we were rescuing thousands back to the lake after they've been hatched. So we were rescuing thousands upon thousands on a daily basis from puddles where they were going to die because they were, you know, there was no connectivity of the water. I also just wanted to say that I don't want, I, I hope people are not getting the, or that the board is not getting the sense that there is no standardization or communication amongst the agencies that are doing hitch observations. I mean, we, we meet and discuss things on a regular basis. And, you know, there's been data collection going on for a number of years, at least in the Big Valley area, from our tribe. However, there's, in this last year, with all of these other agencies being, being engaged, which you're really happy about, there's, there's a lot of communication going on. So, you know, it is important if there's going to be citizen science happening that, that there is training and, and standardization, as, as has been mentioned, because I remember years ago when Robinson Rancheria was going around looking at every creek in the, in the county on a daily basis, they took that task on. And when we compared it to the data from the Chay Council, it definitely appeared that the same school of fish was being counted multiple times. And that's the problem with this, with that. And also, just as Felipe said, you know, there's a concern about, about misidentification. That thousand or more that Scully mentioned that was seen and reported on, on Clerk, we had people out there that day. Those were suckers. Those were not hitch. So it's, it's important for people to, you know, to be, to get the, the identification correct, because they look very similar, especially when there's a, a lot of water or just it's, it's turbid. So anyway, thank you. I just wanted to make those comments.
Thank you for that. And let's see first if we have any new public comments. We have another hand up that already spoke. Nothing further from the chamber. Michelle Scully, if you can be brief, go ahead.
I just wanted to note that Luis Santana, as per my understanding, was also at, out at Adobe Creek confirming the presence of suckers. So for what that's worth, I mean, of hitch, sorry.
Thank you very much. And I see no further comments. I'll bring it back to the board for any final questions or comments before we conclude. Supervisor Green.
Just one last thing on the, on the community science. We all want to help. We're all interested. And certainly their early contributions of observations, both by the tribes and by the, the Chay Council, focused on kind of observational science on, on the tribes. But I don't want to signal necessarily that we're so eager to create a fun, and, and community science reporting app if there's not enough bang for the buck there, right? There may be a good use for community science in terms of alerting to you, hey, the spawn started over here. Go look and go start your regular, more rigorous population modeling. There may be a public education component about educating people about what a hitch looks like and, and other less, lesser fish. But I'm kind of rethinking it. And, and the only reason I mention that is before we all go on and jump on the Clerk website and say, hey, we got to really pump up the volume on this. I, I don't want to do that and then have to lower my own expectations and the expectations of the community that we're going to place a certain value on that observational science. So I want to thank you for educating me on that. I'm going to have to kind of rethink my own thoughts on, on how much emphasis we're going to put on this when there may be a better use of the money and the limited staff time that you have available to really dive into some of the nitty gritty science. So I'm interested. I'll be chasing fish this spring for sure. But I don't necessarily need to burden people with my half-hearted observations if it's not going to be helpful. So, you know, we all want to be helpful. So if it's helpful, please let us know. If you think there are better uses of your time and energy, please let us know that as well.
Thank you for that. And-
You got the answer, the question answered about the, what feeds Tulley Lake?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think that the answer was somewhat rhetorical in the sense during a drought, the creek is so low that it, the, the lake is just what's left of the lake. And that was kind of the question leading to if there's no creek, is it obvious that they are spawning within the lake? And the answer that I received, which I think is just an important one for all of us to recognize, that the creeks are important, yes, but the continuing restoration of the lake shore is also just as important because long-term droughts have happened in the past, and that's probably how the hitch have remained in the lake historically during those long-term droughts. And long-term droughts will occur again. But if we don't rehabilitate some of the lake shore to give them that kind of habitat, similar to what Middle Creek would offer, Middle Creek restoration, that, that would create a different problem, another problem for the hitch, where there is a potential suitable place for them during heavy drought years to be able to spawn. But we have unfortunately taken out a large portion of the tulies in the lake, which has unfortunately killed a lot of that habitat capability for them. So just another project, and I can't help but think of Dr. Lyons at all times when I'm thinking about the Tulley restoration. And I'll explain later. But thank you for asking.
And we have heard Director Turner talk about the ordinance that's being developed for the creek cleanout and, or, yes, vegetation ordinance for the creeks. And that's coming out of the task force strategy. It's strategy? I, I thought it was connected. I thought she said she was sitting in those meetings and then the ordinance was being created. So is there an update on that? Do you know, Jordan?
Yes. Maria is sitting in on hitch task, no, conservation strategy meetings, yes. And Water Resources is working with her and their department in code to make some changes that include vegetation management within streams on private properties. But I'd like to note that we feel it's really important for our new director to be a part of that. And we don't have a new director just yet.
Okay, so we don't have a timeline on what that looks like?
I do not have that timeline. That would be a question for Maria, I believe.
Okay. And you probably don't have answers to this, but these are the questions that I'm asking her is, you know, we, we always are looking for the ways to make it easier for property owners to manage their land and have less tape they have to cut through to get this work done. And it just seems like in my conversations with her that, that ordinance was going to try to address these things. So it's easier, people understand more clearly how this can work and how it can benefit their areas of the creek.
Yes, it will help property owners have more guidance on what they can and cannot do. I will also note that CDFW has done a really good job this year to give better guidance on what property owners can do. And we have, Water Resources has a fact sheet that folks can check out, and that kind of highlights what CDFW, their rules, and it makes it a little easier for folks to understand.
Yeah. And we've had that conversation a few times here over the last year, but for a long time, most people just thought, oh, I can't do anything.
Yep.
And not touch the creek. So this is going to be really helpful.
Yes, I agree.
Just want to talk about some of the dates. I know last year, they said, Scully said that around March 15th, you know, they were starting to see some stuff in the creek. Just want to make sure that's an important date, is it's being moved up, because April seemed like was, or was started last year. I think if you could just make sure that Ben has that and, you know, those things. And is there somewhere that our, our citizens can say, hey, we're starting to see them right now? Is there a number? Or if that's you, Felipe, you put that up there on there?
That, the date of migration is variable, but we do rely on the tribal EPA, so Big Valley-
Okay.
Robinson Rancheria, Havemontal, are all out there doing observations. And we really rely on them to, to let us know when they are moving into the, into the tributaries.
And I know at the summit also, you know, Chuck committed the dollars to Lake County to help us move forward here. I know he also challenged the tribes to reach out and see if we can get some other MOUs put together, because the important thing is, you know, having those folks out there to do the observations, help with the rescues. And I know that message was heard. We just got to get some more MOUs put in place, so we have more boots on the ground too, not only from the tribal side, but community. You know, we know we have a lot of community members that are really interested in, you know, being out there watching. And so we'll look to hopefully continue that and get all the tribes signed up before next year.
If there's no further-
And that just reminded me, so stream gauges. So you're trying to do a stream flow model. I know they're expensive. I've, I learned recently Scott's Creek is probably better situated than most of our other tributaries. Any push on the task force or within the strategy, draft strategy document that would either call for installation of new stream gauges on some of these more sensitive tributaries? Or is that a budgetary line too far, that we just can't go there? So the, the flow calculations you're doing now, you're just showing up and doing manual flow measurements?
So Big Valley Rancheria does have maintained some flow gauges. USGS and DWR also maintain flow gauges. The conversation in the task force now is to keep funding in place to maintain the, the existing network. I believe there are two or three that were short-term funded. And I apologize, I don't, I don't recall exactly where they are off the top of my head. But we are looking for, for funding to continue the existing flow monitoring, the permanent in-place gauges. And then State Water Resources Control Board is also working on adding and maintaining or even taking control of some of the ones that are expiring. So we are looking for solutions. But right now, the conversation is maintaining the current network, and then we will start talking about expanding on it.
And I'm sorry, but I closed public comment. If I open it up, I'd have to open it up for everybody. Please let us know. If there's nothing further from board members, Mr. LaLuce, Ms. Beaton, thank you very much for keeping us informed and the public informed on this. We are definitely going to be asking you to come back, not next month, not in three months. I'm sure that it might be a little bit longer than that. But I think it's important for us to continue to be engaged in this conversation and just keep learning what you're learning, because I think we're all kind of gaining knowledge as we get more data and get a better understanding of what's happening and what we need to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.